Okay, thank you.
We're ready to go?
Yep.
Good, thank you. All right, welcome to the May 2022 School Board Meeting. Thank you all for coming this evening. If you'd like to join us in a word of prayer before we get started with our meeting, that would be wonderful. Andy?
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful day and bringing us together to support Franklin schools. We ask you to watch over our students and staff as they work hard to finish the school year. Please protect our Franklin family as they prepare for the summer break. We pray this in your name. Amen.
Okay, so with that, I'll call the meeting to order. And first off is recognitions, but just let me start with a word about Dr. Vanderbusch. I don't know if many of you remember him, was the principal at the high school. He passed away on Monday, May 2nd. He was married to patients Vanderbusch for nearly 68 years. He was the principal at Franklin Community High School from 1983 to 2000. It's a long time to put up with all the high school kids. So we'd like to just keep his family in our thoughts and prayers, and we'll then move on with the recognitions. Thank you.
Every time we're together, we have the opportunity to celebrate the successes of our students. And tonight, we will also celebrate the successes of some of our staff and volunteers. So thank you all for being with us this evening. We will start with our Central Nine Students of the Month. So Caleb and Harmon, if you are with us, please come forward. Congratulations to our Central Nine Students of the Month. Caleb Alderman in Health Sciences 2, especially in the Medical Assistant Track. Is that right, Caleb? Stay up here for a second. And Harmon Gee in Information Technology. So please join me congratulating these two students.
My mom is with me, my sister, my girlfriend, my grandpa, my mentor who helped me through my senior project is with me. Next year, I plan to go to University of Southern Indiana to... Sorry. I'm majoring in nursing.
That's great. Congratulations.
My mom, my dad, my brother, my sister are here with me today.
Congratulations again. Thanks, gentlemen. Winter Guard and Indoor Percussion. We will begin with the Winter Guard. If you are here representing the Winter Guard, please go ahead and come forward. Robin will have certificates, students and our instructors, if you're here. Our Winter Guard placed 19th in Class A at the Indiana High School Color Guard Association State Finals Competition. Excellent work. Congratulations.
Mr. Depp is representing all. Ms. Depp is representing the entire group.
Representing the whole group.
Congratulations.
Tell us a little bit about them.
So I've been a part of guard for about four and a half years now. We've had a lot of, not a lot, but a couple, I guess, coach changes. And this year, I really think that our coach this year is one of my favorites. And she does a really good job. Our coach right now is Hannah Para. And her brother, actually Lance Para, is also an assistant coach. And I do believe that there is a practice right now, so that's why she isn't here.
Well, thank you for coming.
Just kidding. Thank you so much and congratulations. Another round of applause, please, from the team.
Did she introduce her parents?
Oh, yeah. My mom and dad and my younger brothers are with me.
Sorry about that. Sorry about that. Okay, Indoor Percussion. If you are here to represent our Indoor Percussion, I saw some excitement back there. That's great. The Indoor Percussion Group placed 5th in Class A at the Indiana Percussion Association State Finals and advanced to the finals at the WGI Indoor Percussion World Championships, placing 4th in Scholastic Class A. Let's give our representative a round of applause. Congratulations.
So with me today is my mom, dad and my girlfriend. The Indoor Group went from not doing very well my freshman year, like four years ago, to now getting 4th in the nation, which is a little insane. This group has given me a great opportunity to grow in more ways than just music, but has inspired me to continue doing non-music and music education at UND after this year.
Thank you so much. Congratulations. That's fantastic. And now we will move on to collaboration to recognize some of our staff that are with us, some of our retirees and our PTO presidents this evening. So as I call your name, please come forward. Robin will take a picture of the entire group that's with us here this evening. We will begin with the Support Staff of the Year. For 2021-2022, the Support Staff of the Year are the following. Diana Porterfield was nominated by Creekside Elementary. Kim Barnett, Needham Elementary. Kristy Judson, Northwood Elementary. Cassie Smith, Union Elementary. Jennifer Barnett, Webb Elementary. Brandy Henderson, CBIS. Laura Jones, Franklin Community Middle School. Doug Cox, Franklin Community High School. Shelley Doherty, District Wide. And Morgan Car...or Tar, sorry about that, Morgan, District Wide. Let's give them all a loud round of applause. Okay, I'm gonna have you all in here.
I'm Diana Porterfield. I'm from Creekside, and my husband Mike is with me.
I'm Kristy Judson. I'm from Northwood Elementary, and my family is watching my son outside at the track meet tonight.
I'm Cassie Smith. I'm from Union Elementary, and I didn't tell anybody to come because I didn't know if I was gonna make it on time.
I'm Jennifer Barnett, and I am from Webb Elementary, and I am here by myself.
I'm Brandy Henderson. I'm from Custer Baker Intermediate School, and my daughter Abby, my son Jack is with me.
I'm Laura Jones. I'm from here at the middle school, and my fiancee Mike and our son Abram is here with me.
Good evening, Doug Cox. I'm the SRO at Franklin High School.
Congratulations again.
And next Tuesday evening, we have a celebration of all these people again, and they will receive their certificates at that time. Congratulations. We have a great support staff.
Excellent, excellent job. And now our Teachers of the Year. Every year, all of our buildings, we have eight buildings in the district, each building elects a Teacher of the Year. And so the following are the selections from the 2021-2022 school year. When I call your name, please come forward. Melissa Mullis from Creekside Elementary. Melissa Moore from Needham Elementary. Diana Brown from Northwood Elementary. Andrea Clendenning from Union Elementary. Jody Bridges from Webb Elementary. Trish Simmons from CBIS. Melissa Tunis from Franklin Community Middle School. And Craig Harvey from Franklin Community High School. Again, let's give them a loud, warm applause.
I'm Melissa Moore from Needham, and no one's here with me. My principal is here with me.
Hi, I'm Jody Bridges. My mother Lydia is here, and my husband Scott.
Hi, I'm Melissa Tunis. I teach here at the middle school. My parents are here, and the rest of my family's out at the track meet. And Hadley, Hadley's here to see me.
Craig Harvey, I teach at FCHS, and my wife Heather is here with me.
I'm Trish Simmons. I just came from practice at the high school, so my principal and special ed director are here with me.
Congratulations to all of you. And again, we will celebrate again with that team next Tuesday evening. As we celebrate each year, the close of the year, the accomplishments of our students and our staff, we all also celebrate those who've been with us for a number of years. And it's bittersweet, I think. And so this year, our retirees for 21-22 are the following. Laura Albright from Franklin Community Middle School. Judy Carlstrand from Franklin Community High School. Yes. Cindy King from Needham Elementary. Debbie Lacefield from Webb Elementary. Judy Lamb from Northwood Elementary. Cindy Mappus from CBIS. Sheila Rubel from Franklin Community Middle School. Kathy Reinerson from Webb Elementary. Ann Wilson from Franklin Community Middle School. And Kathy Wilson from Needham Elementary. Okay, now that they're all here, another warm, loud congratulations to all of you.
I'm Judy Carlstrand. I think I've been here 28 years. Oh, you all are with me. I love my job, but sayonara. I'm gonna attempt to repeat that. Cindy King, I've been with the Franklin Community School Corporation for 31 years, all at Needham. I have a former student, which was actually in my very first class here tonight, just by chance. My principal is here, and if it's live, I've got some friends and family watching.
I'm Debbie Lacefield, and I have my husband here, and I've been working at the high school, middle school, and at Webb for 33 years.
I'm Judy Lamb, and I've been teaching in Franklin schools for 33 years. I started as middle school band director at Custer Baker Middle School, and I've taught for 26 years at Northwood. And I'm here with all of you, and I'm honored to be here.
I'm Kathy Reinerson, and I've been at Webb for 30 years. And my family has several more things to go to, so I let them off the hook tonight.
I'm Ann Wilson. We moved here 25 years ago with five children, and they all finished Franklin Community Schools, and our grandson's going to start in four years. So that's my news. No one's here physically, but they are present in their own way.
Hi, I'm Kathy Wilson. I teach at Needham right now. Nine more days. Not that I'm counting. And I've been with the corporation for 42 years, combined with Union and Needham.
Thank you all so much for your service. Robin's gonna take a picture. Another round of applause, please, for their service.
Congratulations. Thank you all so much.
Oh, good.
Congratulations again, and thanks for celebrating with us. Our final group this evening are our PTO presidents. We want to thank them again for their ongoing collaboration and their time. It does take a lot of time and communication for us to kind of make it all work. So thank you to them for the magic that they bring. So for 21-22, Creekside Elementary, Kim Locke. Jamie Law at Needham Elementary. Kathy Thomas at Northwood Elementary. Carrie Coghill at Union Elementary. Emily Berger at Webb Elementary. Carrie Schrader at CBIS. And Alicia Sherry at Franklin Community Middle School. Again, let's give them a warm round of applause.
I'm used to this. Mr. Purely puts me on the spot at all opportunities that he can. So I'm Jamie Law, and I am the president at Needham and have been for three years. Super excited that I was just re-elected to be for the fourth year. Something super exciting that happened this year, just one thing. Well, we were in school, and yes, some days were masks, some days weren't, but it was great to really see the kids, see their faces, and have events. The parents and families really, really came out and supported, so that was wonderful this year.
I'm Kathy Thomas. I'm the president at Northwood, and I will not be renewing. My youngest is moving on to CBIS, so I started with PTO when Mrs. Ott was our president. I would say the exciting thing for this year has been having parents lined up to volunteer for events. We've had such support. They haven't been in the building for two years, so it's really great to have people back.
I'm Carrie Coghill. I'm Union Elementary's PTO president. I think our exciting thing was just being able to have our annual chili supper again after COVID, because that's a huge event for us. So we're really happy to have the community back in the school.
I am Alicia Sherry, and I represent the middle school, and it's a little bit different than the elementary buildings. But I would say one exciting thing for us is the fact that parents are so willing to donate to help make the teachers there feel special. So we more service the teachers than we would the children. And I'll speak for Creekside because Kim's not here, but Creekside has had an amazing year because, like these three ladies said, people are back in the building, and that makes them happy. So we had our Bingo for Books Night, which was one of the biggest we've had, and we also had our carnival, which was probably one of the biggest we've had in a long, long time. So it's nice to have people back in the building.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. And congratulations to everyone this evening. Thank you all.
Okay, we're gonna move on to the business portion, but this would be an excellent time to make an exit if you don't want to stay for that. We'd love to have you all stay. Okay. Thank you all for coming. Okay. Are we ready to move on? The first item on the agenda, or the next item on the agenda, is the Consent Agenda. Do we have any public comments on the Consent Agenda?
Mrs. Benz?
Mrs. Benz? No, okay. All right, seeing none, we'll move on. Do we have any board or administrative comments?
We have a few retirements. I'd like to make sure that we do note them. Dawn Walts, who's been with us for many years, both as assistant treasurer under, when Mr. Mercer was CFO, and she moved over to the South Central Trust. She's retiring from the South Central Trust, and we are the LEA, so we're recognizing her and saying thank you for her many years of service to both the school and the trust. She's done a phenomenal job. And then Kathy Wilson, who we just honored, actually submitted her resignation, her retirement, just a few weeks ago, so tonight, we're acting on that. And I'd also like to highlight that we have officially going to hire and recommend a volleyball coach. That opening's been open for several months, and we're able to find a person that's coming from Paramaritan, was the former Park Tutor Coach. So Mr. Carlson will be replacing Jess Giles, who continued to work with Discover Downtown, but we're excited about that opportunity.
And this is girls volleyball, right?
This is girls volleyball, yes.
Okay, do we have board comments?
Yes, about the 2023-24 school calendar. I've had some people approach me that starting on August 1st really puts a strain on families that are involved with 4H, because that is, like, they'll finish with the fair on Saturday and have to start school like that next week. And if they work for the corporation, they have to report to work while their kids are still at the fair. So, and them changing the date of the fair is not possible. So they just really find that as a hardship, and the kids don't get a little downtime after working so hard that week.
We do talk about the beginning of school. And Kristy, you've been on the calendar committee for a long time. It's really when we plan that fall calendar, we start at the Christmas break, that winter break, and we plan backwards. And that's part of the struggle if we want to keep final exams prior to the winter break. So I understand. I do want to highlight two changes, though, since we brought the calendar to you in March. We did go ahead after surveying families and remove the school day on April 8th. If you'll remember right, we had the conversation about the eclipse activity in the community, some of the plans happening potentially around our area, given our location. So there was no school on that day. And then after the conversations with the high school regarding the senior projects and how well that went, we added back an e-learning day on the 26th. That was originally a snow day. So we've changed that to an e-learning day, so we can still use that day for the senior project presentations in the spring. So those are the two changes we've made since you've seen it, other than the design.
Thank you.
Can we note the 4H stuff for the next time, the next committee? Try to figure out a way to maneuver around that?
We consider that almost every timeline, but we'll continue to do that. Thank you.
So the fair is the 24th through the 28th, is that correct? In 20, in 23? So next summer, it's that last week of July, is that correct?
That's what I was told. I don't know.
I don't know for sure. We can definitely look at that, and since it's a year away, we can also, if you prove it tonight on the recommendation, we can ask Brooke to look into that with the committee and see if there's some extra days in there somehow. How's that?
Yeah.
I don't know if we can, but at least it'll give us anything. And I think Ryan's suggestion of, in '24-'25, we can look to make sure that there is more separation.
So I know it's hard to get everybody happy.
So how do we support those students that go to state, go to the state fair?
They get off, they're, it's an approved, it's approved attendance day for all the kids that go to state fair. And that would be, if they go for a week, it's approved for the week or whatever of their event. And that is usually the third week, I think, for us.
Okay. Well, that's good. Thank you for bringing that up. Any other comments, questions? Okay, seeing none, do I have a motion?
I'll move for approval.
I'll second.
All right. Ryan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Becky?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
And I vote yes, so that Consent Agenda passes. Thank you. Next, we have Architect Presentations. Mrs. Gross?
I'll help with a little intro. As the board is aware, we invited four architectural firms to our February Board Retreat. Tonight, the board invited three firms back for a final interview in a public board meeting. The architects will have 15 minutes to present their firm and why the board should select them for our upcoming projects at FCS. The last five minutes or so of the 15-minute allotted will be for questions that the board may have. Please note that these presentations may include references to future projects and specific buildings, but in no way have any of those decisions been made. We are gauging skill level and experience and creativity in these presentations. So the first projects that the firm selected will help us with some of the deferred maintenance that we have on the table right now, such as HVAC, roofing, and mechanical systems in our existing buildings. So the first of the three is CSO Architects, and Brett Height and Emily Newton are with us tonight.
Please make sure you speak up, because we are live with our audience.
Sure.
And make sure we can be heard.
I'm actually used to being on a microphone in this room. A good portion of my high school career on that stage. So if we could switch spots, I'd probably be a little more comfortable.
So you are Miss King's student, correct?
Yes, I'm a 2004 graduate. I'm a former Needham Bulldog. Miss Cindy King, reference to her first student, that is me. So that's a little bittersweet, also makes me feel really old. So if you could go ahead to the next slide. So I do have with me my coworker, Emily Newton. She's with us this evening. Jim Funk, who you remember from our previous interview, the work session is on vacation this week, so he wasn't able to come. So we'll do our best to fill in his shoes, and we're gonna kind of jump right into it with the time constraints that we have. So as we talked last time, and really as a keystone of CSO, the process is important to us. So with the directive of, hey, go ahead and design a building, we get a little nervous because we don't know you yet. And I say that as somebody who was born and raised in Franklin. I don't know the parameters of the problem. I need to know more. Mr. Sewell did give us a gracious tour of Union. We got to speak to Miss Smith, the principal out there for a little bit, which was great, which just made me realize even more that I don't know what I don't know yet. There's a ton of history and legacy out there that we want to really dig into and understand before we would even tackle such a, such a complex project. So go ahead. So our first step in that process is really what we call discovery, and we want to engage as many people as possible, students, staff, teachers, community members. We really want to know, you know, what makes Union Union. We want to know how that, how the community surrounding it impacts it, and also how it ties into the larger Franklin community, and it doesn't just operate unto itself. And so that's, that's a really, there's a lot of meetings, a lot of talking, and our job in that is really just to listen and learn as much as we can. And from that, we start to distill ideas and thoughts that really will contribute to a design that would come in later stages. One clearly obvious thing, I think, to everyone is if we're expanding Union to facilitate a student population similar, more in line with your other facilities, around 600 students, that's a big change to Union. That's 106, I think, right now. So you're talking about a grade level that's the size of the current school population. That's a big, big shift. That's a big, big shift. One of the ways that we've been really successful in trying to break down that larger building or that larger facility feel is what we call learning communities. And that's where you, you kind of centralize a grade level or a grouping of classrooms together, so that for the primary purposes throughout the day, they're interacting with the same students, seeing the same five, six teachers. You know, they don't really leave that area unless they're going to special activities, like in the gym or music. And that really helps kind of scale it down to a level that's similar to Union. I'm not going to say we're going to replicate that. But it is a huge difference than, you know, along, long corridors in a building. So we took this concept and kind of implemented it and took that as kind of a good, a good thing as we kind of move forward in our design. Obviously, in this process, there's going to be a lot of options. We're going to look at a lot of different things. We're not going to leave, you know, any stone unturned. We're going to focus today on option one, which we heard from the board. It is, let's, what's an expanded and renovated Union? What could that look like? What could that be? And while we're, we're not going to show you flashy finished renderings and a final design, we're going to show you some thoughts on what we think that can be, just because we weren't prepared to start picking out brick colors and architectural styles. And that's just a lot to ask without, again, without knowing you guys and what you want yet. We can't really go there yet. The other options that we kind of threw out there just are basic. You know, is there a new elementary that's in Union Township but not at Union? And Union is something else. Or are we going to build a new elementary somewhere else in the district that, you know, supplements the capacity at Union? All of those have their pros and cons and things that we'd have to weigh through. They have different cost implications, which we'll talk a little bit about later. And, you know, option four, that's something we don't know yet, that we might discover in the process.
So as Brett mentioned, we've looked at the option that you all put forward to us, and we actually took two different approaches to this. Again, showing that each of these options has several suboptions, and it's going to depend completely on the feedback and the direction that we get as to how we would move forward with that. So option 1A keeps Union pretty much in its current footprint as is. You'll notice that we've, you know, taken off the little STEM lab that was added a couple of years ago, but it keeps the 1926 structure pretty much in its whole. And then we've encapsulated it with a new addition, both on the front and the back. And then a second thing that you'll see that stands out to you right away is, is the amount of parking, the stacking space. Obviously, when you go from a student body of about 100 students to over 600 students, that introduces a lot of new challenges and opportunities to the site to reconsider how traffic flow works for you. So with this design concept, what we've done is said, let's keep what's there, but maybe modernize the outside of the building and kind of enshrine that original Union at the heart of it. Can we go ahead? And so you can see a little bit more of a detailed plan in here. Again, a very high-level concept is taking those learning communities that Brett mentioned, doing a two-story building that's obviously in line with what you have on the site right now, as well as a media center that's, you know, a high-volume space, kind of wrapping it around that, similar to how your classrooms currently wrap around your gym. And then infilling and renovating your existing building, which would house an entire grade level, as well as kind of your special spaces there, adding a new cafeteria and kitchen, an administration piece. And then the part I'd like to highlight the most is actually that corridor. And that's going to be the part where, as you're looking at it in this image on the left side, that's the new, that's the modern. It brings in the needs of today's learners. And on the right, that's the legacy of the building. We'd love to consider, you know, keeping that exposed. We're not here to hide it. We're not here to put it away, you know, behind drywall or anything. We'd love to kind of see that juxtaposition of the old and the new and figure out how those mesh together. So, and this will be really quick, if you want to just fly through here. So just to show this kind of in 3D, for those who visualize a little bit better that way, should recognize your existing buildings. This is kind of what we're proposing for the classrooms, the media center, the new administration wing, your new kitchen and cafeteria. And then in that all-important corridor, that kind of binding feature between the two. So you can see that this really wraps the facade. And you'll... There you go. So kind of, again, kind of flying around the building, you can see the old Union is there. It's still there. But if the desire is, we want a new, fresh look on this site, perhaps we wrap all the way around it. We do preserve your very mature, beautiful trees on the backside a lot. You'll see we left those largely untouched for play areas. But the rest of the site is really open to development then, again, to kind of modernize it and change the overall look and feel. A second option would be, we love Union as it is. It has sat proud on this corner for almost 100 years. We want to see that building stand on this corner, you know, for the duration of the life of this school. So our approach then might be, it looks something like this, which is adding on to the east. And that's building a new two-story addition, again, addressing accessibility, which I don't think I actually touched on in the first one, but making sure that you can connect those, that all users of your building have equal access, equal opportunity to all of the amenities. Again, reconsidering what parking and drop-off looks like, bus parking, and keeping your mature trees on site here. So we'll do the same kind of exercise where you look at the floor plan here. And this one is slightly different. We've proposed keeping kindergarten in your existing building. Again, it doesn't really matter which way we would go. We can't presume to know what would work best for the school at this point. But those two-story learning communities that are centered around a media center, keeping your kitchen cafeteria and admin, and then again, that all-important entryway. How are you getting your community members, who maybe have mobility issues, to the gym so that they can do donuts with dad and muffins with mom and your chili supper? We really want to give everybody equal opportunity to get in to enjoy the space. So again, if you look at it in 3D, you can kind of see how these are at the back of the site now, with the media center connected, your admin at the front with a kitchen and cafeteria. And then this all-important connector piece, which is going to do a really heavy lifting job here of connecting the accessibility issues and the different levels. I think there are about 14 different levels in Union when we went and walked through it. So it will certainly be a tall task for us to get through all of those, but it's obviously important to the school. It's important to us that every student, every visitor, every teacher has the same opportunities around the building.
And I would just add, I think the big, to me, the big juxtaposition between these options is encapsulating and kind of preserving that historical facade inside the building, or do we let it stand proud outside? And again, there's 6 million different other options that we haven't explored. These are the two that we thought had the most merit to come and share with you this evening. But there's a whole lot of implications that we have to kind of look through, which is really that, that next step, you know, think critically, creatively. We got to know what the realities are. Let's look at the dollars and cents. And I say that knowing that the cheapest option doesn't mean it's the best option. We've got to take some of those intangibles and understand them and how do they impact? And I would often argue the cheapest solution's not the best answer. Whenever I take the low bid on anything, that's usually always ends out that well. But what are the other implications here? Obviously, there's community implications, engagement, but also, you know, school funding, operating costs, transportation. You know, how does it compare to your other facilities, those things? So, and then our last step here is really to build consensus. So we're going to have all these options. How do we find common ground? And that's, again, more engagement, more stakeholder readings. Let's find those commonalities. Let's zoom in on the details. Let's zoom out on the big picture and really kind of explore everything and find those areas where we have common ground to build consensus and everybody's happy with the direction that we end up in. So I will turn that over. Questions, discussions, we're happy to provide. I know that was fast.
This was great, thank you.
So Brett, step us through again. So that interview process is how long typically? How long do you take?
For, I guess I...
To define the, to define the requirements, that discovery phase where you're interviewing the public, the teachers, the staff? How long does that process take?
So I guess I would posit it back to you, is how quickly do you want to move? I would say a good process is probably at least three to four months. And that's, that gives us time to develop those options, to develop schemes that we can, you know, put tangible things in people's hands and kind of talk through them, rendering and modeling like you've seen here today, so that it's, not everybody reads. Just different people learn different ways. Like, we know that not everybody reads a plan the same way. So those tools are really helpful in some of those meetings.
So once we get the discovery, once we get the requirements defined, what's then the timeline that you would take back? Put that on print for us to review?
So you're saying from, from, here's the program, here's the direction. When are we breaking ground?
Or just to have a design?
That's probably another six to eight months.
Okay. Where I'm heading to is, what issues do you see, once we break ground with the shortage of iron, the shortage of electrical, you know, utilities, right? What's that impact to the schedule? From an overall time period, what are we looking at by the time we break ground till we finish the school?
Yeah, that's, that's a really good question. I was having this conversation today. So CSO is involved in the IU Hospital downtown, which is going to take up a huge portion of the labor pool here very, very soon. And so what does that do to everybody else who's still trying to build? Some of that's just an unknown. Well, obviously, we've seen a lot of inflation over the last 12 to 18 months. Last estimates I've looked, most of our construction manager partners are carrying about a 1% per month escalation in any of their estimating. So that's, that's a hard thing to say. I would say having a construction partner who can help guide through that would be helpful to make sure we're timing at the best time to put those drawings out. Often, I think, we find that spring or late winter is the best time to put something on the street that allows something to bid and then to get in the ground before it's frozen in the next, the next winter, that lets work get started. And some of that may also work backwards from when you want to occupy it or when you're going to see this growth increase and you need the extra capacity. 18 to 24 months is probably a typical construction duration. With the complexity of a renovation at Union, it might be longer than that, especially if we're phasing and trying to keep students on site and how we're working through that plan and how we would do that. A lot of times, that'd be built new, move kids into it, and then renovate. So there's, there's a lot of variables there that could impact a final, a final, you know, number there.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the opportunity. And I got to see Ms. King retire.
All right. I feel the need to emphasize or reemphasize, all this is very conceptual. I feel the need to reemphasize that all of this is conceptual. We're just gauging, gauging the architect's skill, and no decisions have been made. So this is our dreaming phase, and, you know, we would start all over with what he called discovery and build plans from there. So next on the docket is Lancer and Bebe. Terry Lancer and Misha... Billy, Billyev.
Thanks again, Terry Lancer.
Terry, can you hold the mic so that we are? I'm sorry.
I have a teacher voice, I promise. Okay, is that better?
Thank you.
So tonight, to start our presentation, we're going to mainly focus on two things. The first one is something that I think is super important for Franklin Community Schools, and that is community engagement. I think that especially knowing this community, knowing the attachment to Union Elementary School from the alumni, that I think that's like one of the number-one important things. And I think, I almost hate showing some ideas tonight, because we haven't engaged the community yet. And I think that's the very first thing, if we were selected to be your architect, that we would help you engage the community and get their input. So we'll go ahead. First slide is just talking about showing a picture of the existing Union Elementary School. And let's move on. So when we talk about community engagement, we do this with schools all across the state of Indiana. Most recently, we did community engagement with Clark Pleasant Community Schools. And we had a series of meetings with all the stakeholders over there as we were looking, exploring possibilities of what to do with their high school. And it's always interesting when we do these community engagement meetings, because when we do one, we get information from the community, their thoughts and their ideas. And then we come back and have another meeting, and most of the time, we're kind of adjusting or changing from our first meeting. And I think one of the things that that does is that the community knows that they're being listened to by not only us, but being listened to by their school board and their school administration, so that we're truly trying to do what is best for the community. Up on the screen, these are just some recent ones that we've done. Rossville, Greater Clark County, Mount Vernon, East Allen County Schools, which I think I shared in the last interview that we had with you guys, where we had, we had an idea and a way we were heading there with a building addition renovation. We had a community engagement with almost 90 people in the community, and by the next meeting, we came and went a different direction. The first one, when we gauge their response, which we use an electronic response system. So basically, everybody uses their cell phones. And what we do is we have them log into a site and log in, and then we can post questions to the audience, and then they can use their cellphone to give us response. And I think what's important about that system is everybody is anonymous. So anybody sitting in the audience in the community, they are anonymous. We don't know who they are. So they can truly give you input to their true feelings, and nobody knows who it really came from. We go to the next one. So this is what we call Word Cloud. And I know maybe some of you have maybe used this before, but what we do in Word Cloud is we pose questions out to the community. The first one, what single space or program element are you most excited about in this design? So this was kind of a very positive question. And then you can see as people, they type in their answers, their words, and then as they're repeated, those words grow on the screen. So on this one, the largest word ended up being entry. They were excited about the entry we were showing to this facility. So the next one was kind of a little more probing question. What single space or program element do you feel still needs more attention, revision, refinement? Meaning, we haven't quite got it right yet. And so as you can see, people are typing in the different programs or the spaces. And it turned out that kitchen cafeteria for the students was something that that community group felt, you know, you guys still haven't got this right. We think you need to keep working on it and bring us back some more ideas in our next meeting. And so that's one of the tools that we use in community engagement. We'll go to the next slide. The next one is where we actually ask questions to the group and the audience. Again, we ask a series of questions. They can answer A, B, C. And this, we're trying to gauge support out of the group that's there. So I'll just jump to the second one. It says, to balance the overall school program needs with the budget, because we were fighting a budget issue on this job, how accepting would you be about combining two 4th and 5th grade teacher work storage rooms and two individual instruction rooms to reduce some square footage? We had a lot of staff in that meeting. So the question was, can we combine some spaces so that we don't have to give up some other program spaces? And this was a second time around. As you can see, by the time we got there, how many people were accepting of that answer? So we knew that we could combine a couple spaces and not reduce other program. So if we were selected, again, I know this community, I know a lot of people in this community, I would personally lead the community engagement. And I think we would, school board members and administration can either sit in the room and watch it happen, or we also capture this information and can provide it back to you. And I think what it does is it just helps you to understand the thoughts of the community before you make the decisions on how to move forward, and that we can help with that information. So next, I'm going to move on, and Misha's going to kind of show some thoughts about Union. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. So today, we wanted to share with you a few ideas that we have. And going back to what Terry said, this is just a complete shot in the dark. We would be very surprised if we end up at this type of design once we're done with community engagement. Just because what we wanted to show you is that there is not just a single answer to the, all the, to this project. Just because uh what we wanted to show you is that there is not just a single answer to the um, all the kind of, to this project. It's not just build new or renovate existing. What we wanted to look at is a third option, what if it's a very heavy remodel or reconstruction of the building itself? And uh what we are looking at is starting to look at the building itself and seeing what elements are really needing to be preserved. And for this exercise, what we looked at is preserving that west facade of the building, that sort of collegiate Gothic or almost birthing on art deco type of facade. Uh and also the gymnasium of the building that is kind of very unique and special to this building. Um if we go to the next slide, so what we'll do is preserve those spaces and then also remove the academic spaces that are on south and north sides of the building. And uh well, again, preserving the gym and preserving that west facade of the building. Uh and I think we'd go to the next slide, uh and then adding a lot of uh kind of the new academic spaces to the building. Uh some would be two stories, some of them be one story, but again, looking at preserving some of the architecture, respecting it, and the new uh wings really complementing what's still existing. Uh so if we go to the next slide, uh that's possible site plan. And what we have done is designed a school for six hundred students. Now, we understand that's bigger than most of your elementary schools, uh but it's also smaller than what a lot of your neighbors are currently doing for elementary schools. Six hundred students is also a great uh question to ask the community and see where do they feel comfortable about that. So that footprint can shrink or expand if needed to. Uh you can see that uh we've got uh, we've relayed out the circulation, so you've got a lot of stacking for parents, a completely separate bus loop. Um also um creating uh the outdoor learning environments and also separate playgrounds for the older kids and the younger kids. Now, for this particular uh design, what would need to happen is either uh a septic line would need to be extended to this building or a septic field would need to be built on one of the adjacent property, properties. So the property acquisition would need to be, to happen. Go to the next slide. Uh that's kind of a overall plan of the building. Uh again, focusing on that uh central gym uh box, really preserving it. And also, to the west of it, you'll see kind of media center. The west wall of that media center is that original building facade. Uh to the south of it, you'll see the new administration building, uh administration um suite with the main entrance being there. And then around the gymnasium, that's where you'll find a lot of the specials and shared spaces such as art, music, media center, uh special education, and then the two wings with kindergarten on the east wing, and then first, second on the west wing on the first floor. And then if we go to the next slides, uh and then third and fourth uh grades on the second floor. Also an LGI space, also the media center here, you can see, can really open up and have a two-story space. Will knock, possibly knock down the floor uh behind that facade so that, that becomes a very interesting and exciting space. Still preserving that facade and kind of uh having that two-story space. Also looking at creating a lot of great communities and creating these flexible learning environments. That's why you kind of see how the um, the corridors kind of going back and forth uh so that the classrooms can spill and creating those new exciting uh learning environments. Go to the next slide. Uh you can see the uh, the red roofed piece on the right, that's the uh existing piece. And then we're trying to create new architectural pieces such as the red roofed piece on the left that would semi-mimic and also kind of enhance, enhance the look of the existing piece.
Misha, I'm gonna stop you right there. I just let you know, the board can't see any of the material that you're going over.
Oh.
So we don't have the drawings to see what you're describing. So you can move through the slides, but w- without a handout, without something that we can follow along, th- there's nothing that will help us understand what you're talking about.
Okay.
We apologize. I thought maybe it was gonna be loaded on your laptops.
Yeah, that's my fault. Are they?
Nope.
They're not on the agenda.
They were delivered this today to all of us, and we didn't do.
And we were asked to send our presentation today, and we thought that was gonna be loaded on your laptops, because I know you took it.
Do you guys wanna walk down and?
I found that.
Yeah, we're coming.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
We can just sit down here, we can look at the screen that way. They'll be closer to you anyways. Or just sit down there.
Yeah, yeah. Absolutely. All right. We're back?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
So um again, looking at the building itself, about what we might preserve, what we might uh uh be able to remove. We're looking at this facade over here as being one of the architecturally important pieces as well as the gymnasium box behind it. And then if we go next, so we are looking at removing the academic pieces on the south side and then also on the north side. And then if we go to the next one, and then adding a lot of the program to the building itself. Again, looking at uh kind of, this is the original piece, uh and then trying to kind of replicate it, but also respects the existing conditions. So if we go to next, as you can see, a lot of new circulation with parent drop-off, um buses and outdoor learning environments with playgrounds. Go to the next one. Uh so this box right here is the box that we would preserve with the gym box as well as the media center um and the new administration and the two academic wings with kindergarten being here, and then second, third classrooms being here. And then the, a lot of specials being in the middle. Uh as you can see, kind of creating a lot of clear visibility corridors for observation. And then if we go to the second floor, that's where the third and fourth grades are as lo, as well as the large group instruction space. Then uh again, going back to kind of, that's the outside face of the building, kind of preserving this piece over here as well as creating uh similar language uh for the new pieces as well as creating uh other uh building uh parts of the building that would uh really respect the, what's remaining of the building. If we go to the next slide, uh that's kind of where the outdoor learning can happen. Also, the art and STEM can spill out to the outside and the bus pickup and drop-off being on this side. And then if we go to the next slide, again, this is kind of the front of the building with the existing facade being over here. The administration being able to overlook both sides, both the four hundred and division. Um as well as the new academic wing, uh looking at the possible cafeteria with some fenced uh outdoor dining options that have become very popular during COVID uh pandemics. Um so this is just a very quick shot in the dark. Uh we would be very surprised if that's what the final project would be. As we said, that's just one of the possibilities that might happen during uh the community engagement meetings. Uh we are very excited about this project, and if you have any questions, uh.
Go back to the site, uh site plan, and Misha explained uh kind of how you see the parent pick up drop-off.
Definitely. Okay, so we do have uh. Yep, uh parking, staff parking over on the south side. And then uh so what we see happening is parents start queuing from here and come up to this face over here, and that's where the drop-off happens. This is also where the visitor parking can be and as well as additional staff parking. Now, the bus parking can also be double-strived for uh after-school events, so used for buses during the day and then for after-school events. That's also additional car parking. There's gonna be a gate connecting the two so that uh when needed to, those two are completely separate, and then when you need to connect the two drives for the buses, uh that's completely open for that. And again, once we know how many students there will be, we'll be able to size the parking properly.
Well, I don't think it's a simple process, but we wanna do it multiple months. The first thing I say is, you know, you do, first two meetings, make sure like one's on Tuesday and one's on the, you know, Thursday or something. So if your child has baseball practice on Tuesday, we don't wanna not let you come to the community gate. So that's important. And then I say usually, we get feedback, but we wanna come back the next month and do two again because, you know, it has a difference. Say, say we show this and people don't like that playground, you know, get the community saying you tuck it up in between those building lanes or something. You won't be able to come back. This is what the community tells us, and you come back and show a different option, then ask a question. Would we, this is your ideas, and you think this is a better layout? So I would say it will spend a couple of months, uh so we can have multiple meetings until, you know, we ask the questions and we have, you know, ninety-five percent of people in the audience saying, yeah, you listen, you got it right.
Okay, and so and then once we sign off on that thing, when we turn over to you this design, the building, you can see it, those are the same that the concrete.
It is a, this is six, eight months, concrete for the zone. We go through a series of levels. And the other thing that we're doing is making sure we stay on the budget. So, you know, we're getting a budget early on, you know, you do what's called a new design, which means a couple of months. Stop, check the budget, make sure we're on budget, then move on with all the design development, a couple of months. Stop again, make sure we're on budget, finish the construction documents, the engineering we're building on. Takes two or three months. Stop again, check our estimate, and then we go out and bid. So it, it, it takes about eight months, six, eight months for no complicated, sure, design process.
And then, well, I'm trying to think of the overall time, right? What do we have in the process? So then once we go into the bid, what do you guys see the impact, the shortage of resources, the material? How, how does that impact on the study?
So it's a great question. So we're seeing a little bit of change. What we do now, that's a little bit different than what we used to do, after we take a bid, we don't start construction right then. So now, we take bids, we sign contracts, we release orders, and then we wait about ninety days now for all those order materials to start getting ready so they can be delivered. Then we start construction with the concrete foundations, and then we're four or five months in. Now, the structural steel is finally gonna show up. Used to be, we bid right away, start digging, hit the footings in, and the steel's gonna show up in two or three months. But now, that steel's not much showing for six or seven. So we actually take a little gap there before we get started. We do a whole process just for planning, possibly two years. That's what we have. We do community engagement, we do design, we do bid, go through construction, maybe be phased, trying to, you know, get kids into the room. And so it, it's a process. I know this community, I have houses coming, I have kids, so, you know, it's time to get started. So a lot of time, those houses are filling up, and kids are ready to go to school. We got a building, we got a lot of soil, and we're on it. All right, thank you. Thank you so much, and give us extra time to turn it around. Very much appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, yeah, they, they don't have handouts. And I apologize for this, um this is my fault. I didn't request these presentations till today, so um I didn't realize that they weren't on your Chromebooks up there, so. Yeah. Sorry about that. Yes. Yeah, they're gonna stay. All right. Our third firm tonight is Schmidt and Associates, and Kevin Shelley and Anna Burrow will be presenting.
Okay, we ready? Well, thank you. Uh first of all, I'll be, uh on behalf of Schmidt Associates, I want to thank you for the opportunity to continue the conversation, right? We've uh, we've already had this once, and but it's always good, just gonna revisit and, and explore some new ideas. So um, so first, uh just to let you know who's here tonight, um my name is Kevin Shelley. I would be serving as your principal in charge of the project. You'd be seeing me from meeting one to substantial completion of the project. So I'd be the through line all the way through the project. Anna Marie Burrow is also here. She heads up our uh education studio. She's involved in the design of any of the educational work we do, so she'll be speaking to that tonight. And in the world of virtual things, Deb Koots will be here by video. Uh she had an event this evening and couldn't be with us, but she wants to speak a little bit to community engagement. But most importantly, it's the people behind the scenes that who aren't here tonight. In that lower image, that is just a, a, a picture of, of our entire staff uh that's behind us, supporting us every day. First of all, it's why Schmidt? You know, why are, why should you choose Schmidt Associates for this project? And we've nailed it down to these five elements. Number one, our elementary. Number one, our elementary school experience. We've been doing this for a long time. Uh, in the last ten years, two hundred and twenty elementary projects, one point five billion dollars spent on addition renovation historic buildings. So, we do, we do this every day. We know this, education is what we do. Second, community engagement expertise. Schmidt Associates has that expertise. Uh, Deb Koontz and, and J S Held brings another level of expertise that we want to make sure is on this team. We think that, that makes us, uh, the best firm for this project. Uh, third, full-service staff. Uh, we have, uh, architects, HVAC engineers, electrical engineers, plumbing engineers. Why that's important to you, in a building like this, renovation like this, historic building, being able to, for me to turn around to talk to the HVAC engineer and say, hey, we need to have a conversation about this routing and ductwork, critical to the success of our project, and that's something we bring. Interactive tools, uh, we saw a little bit of this in our first interview, but Anna Marie will talk a little bit about this as well. How we use programming and understanding costs all the way through a project. And then finally, collaborative process that produces creative design solutions for you and your community. Uh, key considerations, couple of things we want to talk about as we talk, for your project specifically. Uh, community based, community-based building. We know that this is one of many elementaries in your district, and it's important. And this, while we're talking about Union tonight, it's just as important for all these other buildings as well. So, that's really a critical site utilities. Uh, the good news, bad news, Union is in the middle of nowhere. So, the connection to utilities is going to be critical, and how do we solve those issues? Uh, the existing building, as you know, up and down everywhere you go, how do, accessibility is so critical to education today. How do you make sure we get inclusion for all students? So, that's something we want to have to solve that issue as well. And then finally, your.
Right, and then the historical significance to the community. Uh, as we walk through the building, uh, couldn't help but feel, uh, the presence of everyone that's been there for generations and generations. You walk into that gymnasium, and I heard about the alumni association that's still meeting in that room. Walking down the hallways, it's just decorated with memories of probably people's great-grandfathers and great-grandmothers. Uh, and so, that's what you get when you walk through. It's a feeling of family. Uh, is every teacher who, when we walked in and we were just looking around and taking photos of their classrooms, they look at us and go, I just love my room. I just love, I just love this school. And so, we, we understand that those are key considerations as we go through on any project, uh, and especially here. All of these projects you see right here, two hundred and twenty elementary school projects in the last, um, about ten years, that's twenty a year, they had, they had families, they had communities, and each one of them has their own story of how we ended up with their final solution. Uh, we've, uh, Schmidt Associates, the majority of our work is K-12, and then also, a majority of our work is, uh, in historical preservation. Uh, that really is something that is our niche and something that we do really well. It's about pulling, um, even if it is a new building, if we're taking an existing facility and there's historical pieces and parts to it that really do have, um, a memory to the community and to those people that have lived in it for such a long time, um, that is something that we pride ourselves in being able to utilize and to celebrate in any type of, of facility, whether it's renovation or addition.
So, to kickstart the process, as we know, the, uh, we talked about for, the community planning process is going to be critical. Um, we've, uh, we laid out a, a six-month process, uh, two months for each section, visioning and stakeholder engagement, defining the pieces and the option development, and then developing a master plan and cost, and that's something to work by. And now, let's, Deb speak to you, I hope.
For our process, we are going to include many, many stakeholders. We want input from the staff, from students, from the community. We're going to engage them by inviting them into the school, letting them tour the school, see what it's really like. Because not every parent gets into school. Through that engagement, through those discussions, also through our website, through a blog, through the newsletter, we get to hear and have that dialogue, a critical community conversation that is important to lay a basis for this important decision that you're going to be making as a board.
All right, so this represents the first thing that we would start to do with you, besides getting input and understanding, uh, what's important, uh, to everyone living in the building. And this is what we call our educational space program or our recipe book. It is a dynamic, interactive program in which we are able to look at what that total enrollment is. We're able to look at how many students in a classroom. And then we're able to take that and utilize it to see how much space is required for how many classrooms. So, right now, you know, as we were looking at the existing Union, I think there's about ten classrooms, maybe nine if you don't have that portable there. Um, when we plug in that, we're looking at something that might grow up to six hundred, um, or be somewhere around the five hundred, it's telling us that when you would have spaces such as music or art and your general classrooms with, uh, preschool, might be looking more like twenty-four of those classrooms. That's something we'll work through with you. But basically, what it's doing is it's helping us understand that space. And we're, it's helping us to be able to look at how does that, uh, compare to what you have. Other things, we're able to compare the size of the existing cafeteria and kitchen, right? And see what would that space be if you were to grow and there was more enrollment? And how much space is needed, um, for a dining room or a gymnasium or a media center? So, we can start to plan with that. What you see in that graphic is what we do with that space. We take that space and we put it into puzzle pieces, and we work with you on the best configuration and utilization of how the building should be set up. Uh, right now, the building is set up with a gymnasium in the middle and the classrooms all around it and multiple, multiple levels, uh, that are, are giving you connections to each one of those classrooms. What we want to know is ideally, how do you see a facility, uh, working for you? And then we take that and we imagine with you what that could look like if we were to keep the building and renovate and add on, or if we were to look at what a, a new facility might look like on that, on that site. So, here's your existing building right here with the gymnasium in the center, and you have the kitchen cafeteria up here in the front, then some administration. This red arrow represents where you're coming in. So, this is kind of the lower levels. I know there's a lot of different levels going on here. And then here's the upper levels, and so the classrooms really, and then an open media centerpiece right here. Um, and this is that space for the gym. We think it's about thirty-five thousand square feet, at least that's what we're taking off some of the existing drawings right now. And, um, so what, what could you do? This is looking at a, a way to really give a new presence to the, uh, community, but utilizing the historic significance of some of the details that we've seen and that are so special on that school. I, and really pulling to the front, uh, and building a two-story classroom piece that could be up against, uh, the front here. And this is where that existing entry was on that slide I just showed you. Wonder if we were to pull a colonnade out of that beautiful stone arch that's right there that is the entryway into the existing school? And, um, that becomes a canopy that goes into the new school. One thing we noticed, and it's showing up on the existing drawings, is that when you're out here in the street, uh, we're about four feet or so, there's a, there's a drop in that grade. And so, what if we were taking advantage of that drop in the grade? And we are, um, having the new addition, uh, at that grade level so that it is able to pull into the facility so that you're at that lower level of those lower-level corridor? That way, we're able to save some of the existing structure. In this, what we're showing is this being, um, new construction for the classrooms. And what that does for you is, as you're growing, you're able to build those classrooms out in front, and then that frees up the existing inside of that building so that you're able to renovate that later on, and there's a space for the students to go when that sticky renovation's going on in the building. Uh, we're also, so anything that you see as the blue and the gold, we were just imagining now, could be new construction. And then going in and renovating the existing and kind of reordering where everything was. This being the new administration, being able to pull it out to the front so you have a secure entry in and you have a greeting vestibule area for, uh, visitors coming in. And then having the space that was the, uh, old cafeteria area and dining area, that becomes your vertical circulation up and down to help with the, um, different changes in the existing building for the different levels. So, here it is on a site. Uh, we took the drawings and we put them into Revit BIM so that we could understand the different level changes when we were doing this. And this is demonstrating again where North Four Hundred West is and where West Division Road is. Your existing entry being right here at this point, you have that loop drive. And then over here, you have the asphalt around here. We know that there's the septic field in this location. We also know there's a spaghetti bowl of utilities coming in in the back of the building. And then your, um, mechanical room being back here and your existing, uh, portable unit being in that location right there. And so, as we were looking at pulling that plan that I just showed you forward, uh, you can see how it starts to address and come forward to the street right there. But it's still, um, there's about a hundred and thirty feet, we think, from the front of the building out to the road. Um, it still gives you enough relief that we're able to do some pretty exciting things with the circulation, um, of buses, parents, and drivers. That's one thing we always look at on any type of school facility is making sure that we're separating the buses uh, from any other car traffic. And so, we've taken a stab at showing here a bus turnaround. Maybe the buses stage here, pull into where the existing gymnasium, this being the cafeteria, the new cafeteria right here. This becomes more of the public zone right here in this location. What does that do for you? It does a lot of things. It gives you the ability to have gates here, utilize this turnaround piece right here for any kind of hard surface play that you'll need in addition for the expansion of, um, the student enrollment there. It also allows you to have event parking in that area, um, when there might be any kind of event in the gym or in the cafeteria space that is back here. What, then again, um, here, maybe another cut that comes through where you could have some staff parking. And, uh, along the front, the ability to have a longer stacking kind of drive for parents when they're dropping off or picking up the students before and after school. So, here's some images, um, trying to pull, this is the existing building, so just to remind everybody, you have the two, uh, arched, almost Art Deco-looking entry points right here, and then the kind of Tudor-esque roof, high steep roof, uh, and the beautiful patterns of windows along here. So, uh, what we started to show was pulling out a colonnade, utilizing the same types of, uh, historical elements and having a covered entryway into the building and pulling that back into the existing facility. So, you can see this right here, that is the existing part, portion of the building where the library and media center is upstairs. And then, uh, so you would still have some windows in that location. Down here, this happens to be where the administration, some support spaces are with a new corridor that pulls through. And then two-story, lots of windows, but pulling on some of the elements and the lines that you see in the existing facility, a lot of the brick pattern, uh, using that Indiana clay brick that, uh, seems to be on that facility is beautiful. Wrapping around to the side, this is the existing side elevation of what it looks like right now if you're standing on the road. And then, um, you can see we're saving and, um, utilizing some of these classrooms that are up here in this renovation when you go to the next slide. Um, and on my, on the plan, we showed potentially that could be fourth grade. And then down here, we were showing maybe in those areas where you've got the art and the administration, that can become things like music or art. Uh, and then this is the back of the classroom ring, right here, and you can start to see how there's some separation from where the buses are and where there's parking for the visitors. Another snapshot of what that looks like. Another.
So, ultimately, that, you know, that's one idea, right? So, the idea, we were asked to show some thoughts on that, and that's one idea. There's a lot of processes to go into this. Um, but again, as, just as a reminder, you know, why we think Schmidt Associates is the best team for this project is, you know, first and foremost is our educational experience. We just, we've done this before. Uh, it's a community engagement process. We know it's important, we've got the, the, the professionals involved in that. Uh, one of the big ones for me is full service, a full, full-service firm. All the services in-house in our office. Um, we have the, the integrated tools, and then we also, we just know this, we have a process creative, just gets you involved and make sure it's for you and your community. So, with that, I'll just open it up for questions.
So, the gym is pretty safe around. Have you, uh, in these projects, you produce a gym, like, save the floor and pick up the, like, some of that wood?
Yeah, we've done a number of, sorry. We've done a number of different ways of looking at that, where we have saved the floor to utilize it in existing now. And then we've also done it where we've taken the gym and we've made it into artwork, and so it's other pieces of floor throughout, right? So, you end up having a, a new, uh, rated floor for actual gym.
For performance.
For performance. And we, there's wonderful things you can do with the staining right now on the gym floors that can still have that historic look to it. But we take the old wood, and that can be made into flooring for other spaces. It can be made into artwork, it can be hung up in some of the commons areas.
I would say you're probably, if we started that process today, we're probably a year from now, we're ready to go out for bid, uh, and get started in that process. So, you know, it's six and six is the way I would look at it. Uh, ask me, I'll give you one answer today, tomorrow I'll give you a different answer to that question, and the next day. It is, it's as volatile, in my thirty years of experience, I've never seen it as volatile as it is today. Um, I just heard last week, um, if transformers and generators are a year away, if you're going to get them. So, um, depending on how the procurement process we go through, we'll need to talk, talk about, are there some early procurements that we should be doing for specific pieces of equipment once we begin to understand what the market's doing? Um, that we can look at that, some early, early purchases of things? And then just making good, smart decisions on what materials to use. And make, obviously, this may not be a good example for this project, but precast is another one of those really long lead things. So, we need to really think about, probably not, we wouldn't, we wouldn't do it to anyone else for this project. But that's a type of material, you just got to think about what you're choosing, um, to make sure you're making the right decision. But as I said, the next week, that might change again, so. Thank you very much.
Thirty years older than you? Maybe scrapping.
Hey, sorry about the technical issues, but, um, we will get those loaded into Word docs. That way, um, as you go over your notes over the next few weeks, um, you'll have those for reference. Yes, right.
Um, so first of all, I appreciated your, uh, the twice that you said the thing about this is just dreaming phase. Um, I think over the last, like, two years, what I've started to learn about the school board is I think we have to be, like, really repetitive and say things several times because stuff funnels through, you know, the Facebook, whatever. So, can we, and maybe this is David or Brooke or somebody, take like five minutes and go back to like, what caused this conversation? The demogra, the study we had, the role of union, all those things? So that our viewers online and everywhere else can get the whole picture?
Thank you, I, I will, um, I think I'm on.
Yes.
Thank you. So, about twenty-four months ago, we began a strategic process, looking at the future of Franklin Schools for the next ten years. And during that same timeframe, uh, the city was starting to get information about housing projects coming online that was going to impact, uh, Franklin Schools. And so, as we began that conversation, the city was also having conversation. And then COVID did hit and caused a delay in the redistricting. But the future home projects did not stop. At this point in time, we know we have about thirteen hundred new homes coming into the area. Out in Union Township, we know one subdivision's already been approved for six hundred homes. And as we heard in our demographic study, uh, from Dr. Brudvig, that we can look at about point four students for every home. So, if we just did the simple math there, that's going to be twenty, or two hundred and forty kids in Union Township. Township. The building right now only can hold 200 kids. In addition, we have some other spaces in our elementary schools that we're going to need to be renovated or updated as we continue to grow in that same space. The secondary, in our conversation for the last 18 months, we have ample space here at the middle school, at CBIS, and the high school. In both projects, at the high school and middle school, they've envisioned growth when they started this. Like in that high school, that corridor where it's overlooking all the glass as you walk in, that actually was designed to be another wing at some point if we need it. But we don't need it right now. Elementary is where we're going to be, we're going to, we're going to struggle. On our mapping that we have live on our website, you can see the proposed subdivisions that we know about, that has been confirmed. And so that was the conversation. In addition, we have deferred maintenance because of a lot of things that have gone on. We know that the, with, with the budgeting, we know that in '26, '27, the high school's paid off. That's going to be a huge impact. We also know that because of that, we've done, we've slowed some things down on maintenance. And you heard that early on when Ms. Gross shared, we need to make sure that we're continuing to do our roofing, our hardscape, our HVAC. So all those things came into play to say, with financing as we know it over the last two years in conversation with the board, we need to start looking at bringing in growth opportunities. And so tonight, we've narrowed the selection process down to three architects that will, that will marry with us for this long journey of the next seven or eight years. That was our vision on the admin side. And during that time, Ms. Jobe and Mr. Sewell, once we connect with an architect, they're going to be the point people for our district. You know, Dr. Warland and I will oversee the curriculum instruction and the big picture things. And they're going to be the day-to-day, making sure the budget works, making sure things work. But that's where we are and how we got there. Today, we asked them to give Union as the common denominator. We could have picked any school. We picked Union Elementary because we know there are 600 homes. And with that, we saw three different renditions of what could happen out there. None of them are set in stone. All of them are just imagination to allow us to say, how would we engage with an architectural firm for the future of our school district? So that's where we are. And I would agree with you over and over again, please don't think that tonight that we're saying Union Elementary is going to get a new elementary in the next two years or anything like that. We, we're saying we want to have an architectural firm that we trust, that over the next seven, eight, nine, 10 years, that we can grow and expand with, and that we have close connection with Tina and with Jeff. And they'll bring it back to myself and to the board on where we're headed. So that's a quick summary of where we've been and what we're doing.
Katie, does that helpful to you? Are there other things you think we should be saying or you feel like that was a good overview that? Okay, Katie's nodding. Yes?
Yep.
That's helpful. And the other thing, unsolicited comment that I hadn't thought about until they were presenting, this community engagement piece is going to be really important. But no matter which firm we pick, I think it's really important that there's a union person that's like the face of the community engagement, working side by side with the architect. But I don't think we can outsource that function. So I guess I just like to make sure that, I don't know if it's Katie or whoever, but it's a union person with that background that's trusted in that community, that is sort of at the front and center of those engagement conversations.
Excellent recommendation. I will just say that over the past 13 years of my leadership, the PTO presidents have been stalwart in sharing information and being a part of that. We have one sitting on our table.
She's ready out there too.
We have, we have the most present one right here. And, and they've had great engagement and conversation with us. They pick the phone up and say, hey, this is what I'm hearing, what's going on? And I would agree with you. We need to stay closely married to that, to that conversation and have that person be the one that we're sharing information with. Mrs. Smith does an excellent job of communication through her various mediums that she uses. And that's another person that's trusted, another person that they value. And in addition, I think that they, they value what we're doing. And I think that they trust us. So I think all three of those parts and pieces have to come together as we embark on this next journey. But I really appreciate that guidance and recommendation.
Yeah, and David, to add, my question is around the timing. And Tina, I think we have to really go back to Baker and Tilly to find out what options. Because to, to your point, we got the Bluffs at Young Creek that's going to feed into Creekside that's already full. We've got the new apartments and doubles going out on the east side of town. They're on King Street that's going to hit Webb or Needham.
Webb, right, correct, yeah.
And, and again, so we've got, we've got capacity issues at multiple schools. And our funds, we're going to have to hit questions about our tax rates because the board, we said in the past that we're not going to increase the tax rates. So, you know, how does that limit us? How does that, you know, control the spending that we have? And so just like we want to keep the classroom size where they are today, you know, those are limitations that we all have to work through. And so that timing is going to be critical. And I really think that the shortage of resources, I know that the Bluffs at Young Creek, I was just told today that they are now pushing builds a year out because they can't get the transformers and stuff in to get the power to the new houses. So that's got to impact us as well.
Okay. Andy, to your point, we are working with policy analytics. I submitted some revenue projections to them and they're going through different scenarios on what, how that affects the tax rate. And, and your question about circuit breaker as well. So we're working through those numbers and Baker Tilly is also kind of scripting out, and I'll, I'll go into a little more with the bond issuance topic, but they're kind of scripting out what we need to do and when.
Okay, thanks.
Mrs. Ott, can I just reiterate to follow up, one last thing on the process? Tonight, we had presentations from the architectural firms. This is the second time we've had a chance to, to talk with these people. The next step will be a recommendation coming next month from us to the board on who we believe would be a good partner in that journey. So we'll be continuing that conversation for an entire month. So I would encourage the community, as they watch the presentation, if we have questions, please get those in to us. Mrs. Betts has excellent opportunity through her communication website, my email accessible President Ott or any of the board members as we embark on this journey. We definitely want community engagement to start now and not when everything's already stopped and said, oh, where are we in this thing? We don't need a third-party firm to help us with engagement. We've got great engagement, but over the next month, please ask a question. We'll, we'll respond back to you and get those information opportunities back. But in June, we will be coming with the recommendation.
And thank you, Tina, for setting those up. You did a good job. Those are good.
Thank you.
Okay.
Please let me know if there's anything else that you all would benefit from in making that decision.
Thank you. Are we ready to move on? All right. Tina, it's you again. Bond issuance.
So pretty much on the same topic. Also at the February board meeting, we talked about potentially doing a bond issuance in '22, in the fall of '22. And this would be to address some of our deferred maintenance and those HVAC and roofing projects that you keep hearing about. If we decide to act on this, we'll need to start the process with public hearings pretty soon. So with your permission, I would like to work with our financial consultants to develop some options for the amounts and types of bonds that we would like to pursue and timelines for those action steps. So I'm just looking for confirmation that it is the board's desire to move forward with the potential bond issuance in '22. And this would be, we'll have a couple of different options, but this would, would be to address the deferred maintenance in the existing buildings.
Oh, oh, he's gone. He's still working. I would like for you to please go ahead and do that and see, is everybody else okay with that?
It's fine.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then the budget calendar.
All right. It's time for budget already.
Tina, we missed you. We want, we want you to come back and talk to us.
Just numbers all the time.
I am kind of dominating the agenda tonight. I apologize for that.
No, no, the next several months, you're going to be out and talking to us.
That is true. So the, the calendar looks pretty similar to previous years with our budget workshop in, in August, our public hearing in September, and our adoption right after fall break in October. So no real changes here. I'm hoping that the auditors hit that August 1 mark with the assessed value because that's very important in putting these budgets together. So hoping for no delay there.
Okay, thank you. We're going to move on to action items. Do we have any public comments on action items, Mrs. Betts? No? Okay, so we'll move on to the appointment of directors to the Franklin Community Schools 1996 Building Corporation. And that's Mr. Yel.
Thank you. This essentially is, is an administrative item, but obviously requires a little bit of board action. That's why it's on your action item agenda. In 1996, something happened to the northern eight acres of the middle school campus. I was not the attorney at that time. I suspect it might've had something to do with athletics because that's where your athletics is located up there. But in any event, in order to finance whatever improvements were made, a building corporation was formed and it was called the Franklin Community School 1996 Building Corporation. That's the entity that issued the bonds and constructed whatever it was that was constructed, leased it back to the school corporation. In connection with that, about eight and a half acres off the northern side of this campus was conveyed to the building corporation. As you know, the state of Indiana is doing substantial improvements to US 31. In connection with that, they are going to require some right-of-way dedicated from, from the school corporation. From Batto Street all the way north up to, I think, the commencement of Northwood. Not sure that they're going to need right-of-way north of the northern part of the middle school campus. So the engineers that are working on that discovered that title to that eight and a half acres is still in the name of the old building corporation. And there's no reason for that to occur. It was simply an oversight that when the bonds were paid off, the real estate was not conveyed back to the school corporation. But that's the status right now. And the state of Indiana will not accept a dedication of right-of-way from Franklin Community School Corporation until we're shown as the record owner. So in order to transfer that real estate back to the school from the building corporation, it's necessary for you to reconstitute the board of directors of that building corporation. And that can only be done through board action. At that point, once we have a board of directors, and my recommendation is three, that's sufficient to do business, I'll convene a very short meeting with that board, will organize adopt officers and adopt a resolution conveying the real estate back to the school corporation. So tonight, I believe Dr. Clint Ending is going to have a recommendation for you to consider in appointing three members to the Franklin Community School 1996 Building Corporation.
Yes, the three members in the community are Dwayne Mercer, Joe McGinnis, and Kim Minton. We have spoken with all three. They've agreed to accept this position. And I explained briefly that Roger would actually be leading them through this. And at this time, I'd recommend that group become the new Franklin Community Schools 1996 Building Corporation for the process of obtaining the deed and then moving it forward to the state of Indiana for the major improvements.
I do have one question. So then, once, once we do that, will that committee just disband?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, there'll be no reason for it to exist. That's been retired and they won't own any, any real estate.
Okay.
So they'll just cease.
Very good. All right, well, do I have a motion for this?
Move for approval.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Ryan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Becky?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So that passes. Thank you, Roger.
You're welcome.
All right, so we're going to go on to the ADA software. Is that Mrs. Betts? All right.
This is Doug Blachman. This is our vote of governance, just to make sure that we are compliant with the ADA laws. So Ryan is on our vote.
Did you have any questions?
I move for approval.
I second.
Okay. Ryan?
I'm a yes.
Okay, Becky?
Yes.
Yes.
Me too. That passes. Thank you, Becky.
Congratulations.
Okay, so now we have the book adoption, right? Curricular resource adoptions.
Yes, and I presented this information with regards to social studies and science, or science, mathematics primarily. At the last meeting, there have been no changes since the April meeting.
With no changes, I move for approval.
I'll second.
Okay. Ryan?
Yes.
Becky?
Yes.
Andy?
I'm?
Yes?
Yes.
And then I vote yes, so that passes. So we'll move on to the, wait, am I on the right thing?
The frontline.
Yeah, the frontline AppleTrack contract. Who is presenting?
Actually, we moved that to consent agenda. And I'm just, I'll just talk about that.
I apologize.
Tina had a question about this. We were part of a hiring consortium and I, and I think, Kristy, you were wrong when I think we were talking about bringing on AppleTrack to help us with receiving resumes, having a constant application process. The consortium folded. AppleTrack has been our base to obtain those. So we need to enter into a private, our own agreement with them. And that's what this did. However, it did escalate the price as we have a few other additional resources, but we don't get some of the discounts that we had as a larger court consortium. It's a one-year agreement, and if we don't like what's happening with that, we will continue to pursue. Michelle did briefly look to see if there's anybody else out there, and this is really the, the best option for us at this time.
Great, thank you. Then the resolution to transfer funds.
Okay, this is a resolution to replenish our employer of choice funds. So that is taking the revenues from our Cub Care, Cub Academy, and Cub Quest programs and transferring it to employer of choice for those employee engagement activities that we have. We, our recognition events, our under employer of choice, financial wellness. Katie Smith has been gracious and kind in keeping us on track with our wellness initiatives. So this is only the second transfer that we've done since I've been here. COVID slowed us down in implementing some of that. The typical budget for that activity is $150,000 a year, but we had, we had $35,000 remaining from previous years. So I am requesting authority to transfer the amount of $115,000 from the extended ed fund to the employer of choice fund.
Okay, great. Do I have a motion?
I'll move for approval.
I'll second.
Okay. Ryan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Becky?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Motion passes. Thank you. And then to the resolution ordinance to transfer appropriations, that's you again.
Me again. So this is one of the typical fiscal year-end close resolutions authorizing me to transfer among, between the funds, education operations and debt service between January 1st and June 30th. If we do have to make those transfers, which normally we don't, I will report to the board in July.
Move for approval.
I was going to ask one quick question.
Oh, sorry.
No, I don't need to ask that question. We're good. Never mind. Move for approval. Do I have a second?
I'll second. And I'll be yes.
Becky?
Yes.
Yes.
I vote yes. That passes. Thank you, Tina. Okay, so we'll go on to discussion items. Book rental fees. We do have S R funds again, and in that budget this year, we will be covering, as we did last year, Chromebook rental and fees. That includes our Google platform, GoGuardian, and our Chromebooks for all of our students. I also want to note that through Matt's good work, we received an emergency connectivity fund, which is helping fund all of our Chromebooks in kindergarten, fifth grade, and ninth grade for the next four years. In this document, it's pretty robust this year because of the adoption processes. We have some of our normal minutia, that's part of textbook and rental, but the extensiveness is due to the social studies and mathematics adoption. I also wanted to note, through the good work of the team, one of my worries was that we would see a significant increase in mathematics. We haven't adopted for six years. Happy to report, in many cases, we saw a decrease across the board. So I was very excited this year to see that.
That's great news.
Wonderful.
On the, so on the Chromebooks, who then is paying for Chromebooks next year? Anybody?
No one's paying for, families are not paying for Chromebooks.
She's saying that.
S R funding and connectivity is paying for them next year.
And on the regular books, if you're free and reduced lunch, does that cover this too?
So free and reduced lunch, they receive a bill, but they are not required then to pay that bill for free and reduced, yes.
And if you are above free and reduced lunch, but your books are expensive, are there like, what do you do?
Do you do payment plans?
Yeah, we started payment plans last year. We used to, I think, only collect one or two times a year, but we created the option for parents to do monthly payments.
Do you get a lot of pushback, or like a lot of people that need support from the fees?
They'll typically just not pay.
Oh, fair enough. Fair enough. Okay.
Do you, do you know a percentage of who, who doesn't pay that, like, goes to collections?
That goes to collections?
Yeah.
No, but I have that information. I can look that up really quick.
Do, do you have like an idea of a dollar amount in mind?
No. I wouldn't want to go out on a limb with that.
Here on the microphone.
Thank you, Tina.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Warland. All right, so we're going to move on to board and administrative comments. Does anybody from the board have a comment? Nope. All right. Administration? Yes, lunch is on our lines.
All right, there's my cue. And now I need to use my security key to get into my laptop. Thank you, Matt. Okay. So, as you know, due to the pandemic, students have not had to pay for breakfast or lunch for the past two years, and that, that included a hundred percent of the students regardless of free and reduced lunch status. That, all indications are that that's going to go away for next school year. We haven't received official word yet, and we may not until closer to the start of school. But Elizabeth and I have been working on some projections, going back to seventeen, eighteen meals purchased, because that's really the most accurate we have, and then trying to gauge where the, where the feds will land with the meal prices. So what I can tell you so far is we haven't had an increase in lunch prices in, in many years, and I probably need to quantify that as well. But we're probably looking at having to increase the breakfast and lunch prices to cover the increased cost, which might, may be up to twenty percent for next year, and the increased cost in labor.
It's a good heads up for everybody.
Yep.
Thank you.
More to come over the summer.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Just, just want to reiterate something that Ryan said, that our textbooks are how you apply for free and reduced in Indiana, it's a longer lunch, and for, for most of the nation, it's free and reduced lunch. Ours is textbook. It has to do with an auditing issue that happened. So I just want to remind parents, please, if you have questions about income or you feel like we can help, please fill out that form. It's, it's online, we'll send it home in our packets, but we want parents to fill that out. And then that would cover lunch, but it, it actually considers, for us, Indiana, free and reduced textbooks, but it's called free and reduced lunch. It's an auditing issue, but ultimately, please, parents, if you have any questions about that, please contact us, and please fill out that form. Okay, thank you. Calendar is the next, next item. Just a reminder, Friday, we are meeting here at the middle school. We're going to be upstairs, right above the main office on the classroom on the right. What number is that? Do you remember? Right across from the art room. We are going to have breakfast again, meet and greet with the staff, and then Rita's going to be here to talk about teaming and the master schedule, what's happening with the teaming as we move forward, and once again, part of our strategic plan that we adopted. So we're looking forward to that. And then if time allows, a tour of the building to see what's going on. But I told her, really, it's a conversation with all of you about the teaming and what's going on. And what time is that again? We're going to start at seven-thirty, and then probably about seven forty-five, seven-fifty, Rita will start in that conversation. Someone up, Mr. Ray House did. End of the year recognition is next Tuesday, and we are meeting for dinner. You're all invited. We're going to honor the teacher of the year, support staff of the year, the retirees. We'll select support staff of the year, and this year, for the first time ever, we're doing an elementary and a secondary teacher of the year that will move on to the state. And so we, we are through that process, we're looking forward to that. What time are we starting? Six? Wednesday at six. Thank you very much. Last day of school is Friday, May the twentieth, and then graduation is Saturday, May twenty-first, ten o'clock. If everyone could be there at nine, that would be great. That way, we can go ahead and get rearranged, and also, if there are any changes to the order of scheduling where you want to make sure you're handing the diploma to the student, we can make sure that takes place. I would say that let's meet in the athletic office like we traditionally would meet, and then we can walk over to the outside of the stadium. The kids are going to meet in the field house, but we'll be in the athletic office. If anybody needs their capo gown, their gown, let me know with that, and then that'll be at ten o'clock for a sunny, wonderful day. And we're looking forward to that. Sunny and seventy degrees, right? Yes. It will be someplace. Yeah, but we're, we're looking forward to that. And just a reminder to parents, if forecast of rain is coming, we are planning to do Saturday, right? So we're going to stay in, in that time, and we'll narrow down a window and try to get a specific time. I know the board's asked for that, say, what, what time would we, would we go if we're going to miss the, the ten o'clock? So we'll get that out to everybody and make sure it's communicated through Mrs. Betts and the communication team in the high school. Thank you very much. All right, do we have any public comments on anything on the agenda? None? Okay, seeing none. Roger, thank you so much.